I'd like to welcome all of you, those that are here personally and those that are listening online to this meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners for May 18th. We appreciate folks listening in. We've got a lot of stuff to cover tonight, so we hope to exponentially get through it and still hear from all those folks that have important comment to make. Tonight, we'll start our meeting with an invocation which will be provided by Lance Metzler, our county manager, and it'll be followed by a pledge of allegiance that tonight will be led by Commissioner Pertle.
Would please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you in the mighty name of Jesus, thanking you and praising you for your county, for the county. I thank you for the plan you gave to our forefathers by which to govern our nation and for the division of powers so that your destiny does not rest in the hands of one person. In praying for those in authority, I therefore lift up our Board of Commissioners to you. I pray that by your holy power, our Board of Commissioners would make laws that are just. Father, I ask you to give them wisdom to make decisions that would strengthen and prosper our county. We desire that they would make right decisions concerning the politics, the social welfare, and the economy of our county. I pray that they will be motivated by your hand. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you, and you've had it for some 10 days or more now. I believe there are going to be some amendments to this agenda, but those also have been published there. Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the added amended agenda with the resolution request to Governor Roy Cooper, the Board of Education vote in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 15 and 6.
I have that motion. I might mention that items one and two will fall under the new business section.
Right.
And the close will be at the end of our session. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed by nay. It is approved. Consent agenda is item number five. And before I go any further...
Mr. Chairman, yes, if you would, under letter D, number six, she would modify that to say, modify the consent number six to authorize the water line extension of North Carolina 65 to come from the regional water system capital project fund rather than the general fund and balance?
I'm in my motion, please, to reflect it.
Yeah, this is consent agenda here.
No, I can see. Sorry.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
We need a motion on that first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion for Mr. Pertle to approve the consent agenda. And by the way, as per normal, if you have comment, these are normally non-controversial items, but if you have comment or questions, please contact Mr. Metzler at the county manager's office. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. Passes unanimously. Item six is a three-part section tonight and have to do with rezoning. I'll ask Carrie Spencer to come forward and talk to rezoning requests from Stephen Kidd
This is, making sure I got the, there we go. This is a rezoning case for Stephen Kidd. This was originally scheduled for your March Board of Commissioners, but delayed due to the state of emergency procedure, so we are now hearing this case at the Board of Commissioners. It's a two-acre parcel that is located in a residential area on Cavalry Road. The applicant wishes to rezone to light industrial with conditions. He'll describe his business to you when he approaches the stand, I'm sure. The area that this parcel is located in is considered urban transition land class. The parcel will be served by individual well and wastewater, and it's currently vacant. The property is currently vacant. There are developed properties nearby with residences. The development that the property owner may propose will have to go through site plan review. At this point, we're just looking at zoning, but he will have to go through a commercial site plan review for building a non-residential structure and business, and that will be subject to landscaping and signage and lighting and all of those non-residential standards.
Did I hear you correctly, on-site well plus water disposal?
Correct.
Okay.
I have, these are all the strategies of the land use plan, then I've highlighted the ones that I feel are most appropriate for this case. Developing detailed design guidelines will help this business fit in with the neighboring properties and land use policies that diversify the economy, which is one of the ways to diversify an economy is to encourage home-based businesses. The policies of the land use plan that are most relevant are commercial development, residential development, and community appearance. And it is staff's opinion that this case does satisfy, meet those policies and guidelines and recommends approval. Here is the property and where it's located and an aerial view of the property. This is not very well seen on the screen. You have a list of the uses that have been proposed and those that have been, that will be prohibited. One citizen submitted a comment in opposition for this, actually two citizens, excuse me.
I'm going to ask you to hold that until the public hearing because that's...
Oh, absolutely. You're right. You're right. We're all kind of, kind of new at this.
Mark's on bond tonight.
I'll go back to the property itself. There we go. That is all I have unless you have questions for me at this time.
No, but keep those cards and letters coming in. Stay close. I think we're ready to call for a public hearing unless you guys need technical questions ahead of time. So I declare the public hearing open, and I already have a list of folks that wish to speak to this particular zoning case, the first one being Mr. Stephen Kidd.
Mr. Chairman.
Stephen Kidd.
Should we let the applicant speak in just other three minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, my pleasure.
I want you to listen to something the manager's going to say, but it's for everybody, not just you, Mr. Kidd.
The applicant has the ability to speak as long as they need to to lay their message forward, but the, as we're speaking forward against, we have three minutes.
Okay. Mr. Kidd, give us your address and then your own.
My physical address, where I live at, is 221 Acorn Road, Stoneville, North Carolina. And I guess you need to know what I intend to do with this property over on Cavalry Road. I don't, I don't even know.
Okay. Okay. That is voluntary.
Yes, voluntary. Well, I have, I just want to, I bought the land with the intentions to put in a shop there. I've been in business for 24 years. I run a small painting and remodeling business, two or three employees, not much. And I, it's a 30 by 40 shop, actually. I've already bought it, but my intentions are to clear the land and build me a shop there, and that's what I want to do with that property.
Any questions from you before we move on?
Just a quick question, Mr. Kidd. I went by your property over the weekend. I think, and I talked to other commissioners, I think anything you do out there is a big improvement, so I appreciate you stepping up, wanting to do something with the property.
Yes, sir. Actually, I had hired a guy to start clearing the property, and I don't know what happened to him. He just, he's the only guy I ever saw cut logs and bring them back to the land and lay them. I never, I don't understand you, put a load of logs on a truck and then bring them back, and that's where I'm at now, but with this COVID-19, it kind of has affected my income with my wife being out of work, because she's a hairdresser. So that kind of hurt me on that, so we're kind of watching how we spend money at this time because it takes money to clear that property.
I understand.
Plus, I had to deal with some other stuff, but we're trying to move forward.
Right. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you doing anything out there.
Yeah, I want to clean it up. That's my whole objective.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Kidd, I think you stated at your previous, at the planning board meeting, you anticipate storing equipment at this location?
Yes, sir. I have painting equipment, I also have a lift and my trucks and so forth, but most everything I'm hoping will be on the shed or inside the building. I mean, I do have small trucks, but that's just a hobby of mine I fool with, you know? Man's got to have a hobby or something.
Especially with the COVID, huh?
Yeah.
How many vehicles were we talking about, Mr. Kidd?
I have two work trucks, actually, but as far as small vehicles that I tinker with or what I do is I'll buy them, fix them up and sell them. I might have two or three. That's, no, that's like what I have at my house now, but I'm just overrun where I'm at, so that's why I bought this property with the intentions. I even have my building already on my property where I live at so I can, you know, move it there. I've already bought the building and it's laying in the field, but I need to get it moved. But, yeah, I have several vehicles that I, I like motorcycles too. I fool with them.
No, that's fine. Just trying to get a idea of traffic. And I would assume as a painter, you have the normal sort of processes and procedures you have to deal with as far as the paint and other potentially hazardous materials?
That's, that's the big question that has really happened when I came to the meeting earlier this year. They had a problem with the toxins, and I think they were worried about thinners and paint thinners, but I've, I don't fool with a lot of oil-based products at all because nowadays it's just, they make such good products, or waterborne products, that you really don't need it. Now, you might paint a set of cabinets once in a while with an oil-based product, and that's about it, and I use mineral spirit, so usually it's gone by the time I can finish with the job because I've either mixed it in with the paint or cleaned the brushes, and it's very little of it left.
And none of that can be considered in a rezoning case? Okay. Do you have a question, Mr.?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, you volunteered that information, but just to clarify, that property, all that has, was done by the prior owner who was affiliated with Southeastern Industrial Painting and Supply, is that correct?
That's right.
And so when you're talking about sandblasting and painting and the other things that have been stored, that, that's, you know, that's a prior situation, that's not...
That is. That had probably been there 30, 35 years ago. They did some sandblasting up there, and I've had to get that problem taken care of. I'm in the process of doing that now.
So you're cleaning up the mess from the prior owner?
I am. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Yeah. Actually, as Mrs. Spencer mentioned, that's going to be covered when you do the specifications and so forth. Other questions, gentlemen? You're off the hook there, Mr. Kidd. Thank you for explaining.
All right. Thank y'all.
If you don't mind hanging around for a few minutes in case other questions come up.
Not a problem. Thank y'all.
Should he sit over here so he can hear?
Probably.
Should he over there?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I'll take him out of the corner. I'm not having him in the corner.
I'm not bothered which comes first, but I'm going to call James Wells if he has...
No, Sheriff, we told him to stay right there, Sheriff.
We're within the numbers. We're going to keep him for a second until, we're looking for Mr. Wells.
Step out.
Who?
Somebody got to step out.
We got 10, right?
Yeah, we got 10. Somebody else comes in, somebody needs to step out.
No, we don't.
The county manager step out.
And my...
Well, he's, he's part of it, so he needs to hear.
That was my thought is...
Yeah. Okay, we got, we got it now.
It's his property, he's got to write...
Land step out.
I would like to have the owner here as well.
Yeah.
Is this standing outside? I said, Kevin.
Welcome. You're Mr. Wells? Come, come right on in. You're up, and if you'd give us your address and make any, any sort of comment that you'd like to make within bounds, you've got three minutes to explain your position on this property on Cavalry Road.
Well, my land joins it. They say I'm a thousand, I've got to be a thousand, I'm a thousand feet from it. I'm not. My land joins it. James Wells, W L L S, 240 Rogers Lane. There's not much I can say, y'all going to do what you want to do. That's my feelings, and, but I'm against it. I don't want it in my front door. There's more than enough traffic out now. And when he got told about, he going to have three or four trucks and spray painting and all this stuff, I don't want it. That's just my feelings. So that's all, really, all I know.
Before you leave, we're doing this slightly different from what we know. So you may complain this congestion, additional traffic?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Well, we certainly appreciate you expressing your opinion. Thank you for being here, Mr. Chairman. And as he departs, we're looking for Alton Williams.
Well, I mean, why you still waiting? Ain't the entrance to this property on Cavalry Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's on, he's on the road behind the property.
I have those out there and go down this road. Actually, I'm part of that road. My land runs on Rogers Lane. They have to go down.
That's what I was kind of confused about, more traffic.
Is Rogers Road a public road or private road?
Private road.
It's private road.
You must be Mr. Williams.
I'm Alton Williams, yeah.
If you tell us where you live and then whatever...
210 Rogers Lane, it's that thing, he's going to build over there, it's going to be right in my front door, and I don't want it getting in the well. I don't want to, we've had trouble with the other painting company over there before, the paint drifted over and got on our cars, and we, we just don't want it to get in the well, and I don't want to hear the noise. We've always been private and quiet. It's been an easy, you wouldn't want it in your front yard, would you?
Right.
You wouldn't want the smell of paint coming through your yard, did you? You wouldn't want it getting into your well, and what's going to happen then? We lived there 42 years. I'm speaking from my mom and dad and me, we all lived there.
Well, no, no, you asked me a question. I wouldn't want the smell either, but painting's got to be one of the quietest operations I've ever run across.
Yeah, what about the smell?
I told you I wouldn't like the smell.
What about, what if it got in your water?
Let me ask you something.
Why, never mind. You go ahead with your position, that's for us to listen.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to say about it, Mr. Williams?
Well, I'm totally against it. I know all the neighbors around there are totally against it. A lot of them couldn't make it today, probably.
Yeah, I do have a question. I do have a question. You live on, as does Mr. Wells, on Rogers Road.
Yeah, we were one of the first ones to live down Rogers Lane, yeah.
Which is, excuse me, Rogers Lane?
Yeah. My aunt actually owned a farm at one time down through there.
And this property faces Cavalry Road?
Right, but my, my property faces it. Like, I'm standing here looking at my front door, and you're going to be right there.
Right. So your front door doesn't face Rogers Road?
It's going to be less than a thousand feet to where he's putting his building at, where I'm at.
It faces the back of his building, right? You face the back of his building that he's proposing.
Right, yeah. His, yeah, my front yard goes across Rogers Road, right on over into, one time we was going to buy it and put a driveway through there, and the cleanup was going to be a job, you know?
Yeah. So we've heard.
Yeah.
Other inquiries while he's, Mr. Williams is here. Yeah, you can ignore that.
Only, only comment I have to make, I don't, I don't think it's going to actually be painting on the property. I think it's just going to...
No, but the wind, the drift, the wind, we had, we, it got on our cars one time before when he had a painting company over there, Southeastern, I remember them.
Right.
They also had something going on right there on the edge of 14, right there as you come down 14.
Right, I got you. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Anything else, Mr. Williams?
Well, we just don't want it to get in our water table. It's going to devalue our property, probably, and it needs cleaning up. I meant that, yeah, but a lot of trees, but, but it's just, it should be a home, housing development instead of a company.
Why are you suspicious your wells are going to get polluted?
Huh?
Why do you feel your well is going to get polluted?
You don't know what gets in the water table.
No, I'm very familiar with water tables.
Get in our water, get in our well, get it, get in James's Wells, Rogers Wells.
I'm asking you, why do you feel it's going to get in your well?
Why do I feel like it's going to get in there?
Yeah.
Well, it goes in the ground, don't it?
No, it doesn't go in the ground.
You don't think it goes in the ground?
No.
Okay.
If it goes in the ground, that's against the law.
Well, you never know, though, right?
Never know.
I'm just telling you, the law says you can't put it in the ground. Other questions, gentlemen? Mr. Williams, we appreciate you coming out and letting us know your position.
I just want you to know I'm totally against it, okay? I'm not, not, nothing to him, but you know, just totally against it, where he's putting it at.
We got it.
Right in my front yard, right in my front door.
Appreciate your opinion.
And I don't appreciate the sound either, probably the noise, probably a loud problem.
Got you.
Okay. That it?
That's it, unless you have something else? Other inquiries? Carrie?
Are you going to give a chance to rebut or are you...
You going to read the other?
We got to read the other one.
For the public listening in, there were some other comments offered in regard to this case that were passed to us electronically or anyhow, they're written, and Ms. Spencer's going to cover those.
So we have two comments that were submitted in regards to this case. One is from, excuse me, Paul and Lynn Baldwin, 250 Rogers Lane, Stoneville. Dear sirs, due to circumstances beyond our control of Governor's Executive Order 138 to COVID-19 III, I'm in the high-risk age with underlying medical conditions, and four, my spouse is in RN under quarantine at home, so we will not be able to exercise our constitutional rights to be heard in opposition to Case 2020-001, rezoning of residential protected to light industrial. Therefore, we request a postponement of decision on Case 2020-001 until Executive Order 138 expires or read our prepared opposition statement into the meeting. I didn't, it's okay that we, I read the whole thing. We request this rezoning application be denied on grounds of failure to meet all of the requirements of the land use plan for managing growth, Rockingham County, North Carolina, dated September 2006, Article 17, site design and landscaping requirements for non-residential zoning districts, revised 12/13/2005, and the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO. These are Rockingham County land use plans, ordinances, and requirements. The burden is on the commissioners to determine if the applicant has met all conditions and sections dealing with zoning and rezoning in relation to bordering properties. And to avoid any appearance of cronyism, we request that Charlie G. Hall recuse himself from voting based upon personal friendship and possible business dealings with the applicant, Stephen Kidd. Note, side note, verify the DEQ hazardous waste test result report is complete and available, if not postponed. Cheryl Watkins, 938 Eden Road. My name is Cheryl Watkins. My husband Jody Watkins and I live at 938 Eden Road, Stoneville. I am 64 and he is 62. The meeting, May 18th. I would like to be there, but I suffer from COPD. Jody is disabled and rarely leaves our home. We have lived here over 27 years. We oppose, don't want any light industrial or any such thing. This is our neighborhood, and this is a place where almost all our neighbors have lived here for a very long time. I'm afraid to come to the meeting. I and my husband are not in good health. Could you please let me know how we can vote against allowing this to happen? Sincerely, Cheryl Watkins. Thank you for your help. This was an email that Emily received and got back to her by saying that this comment would be read into the, that the way for her to be here, heard would be for her comment to be read into the record. Those are the two comments that I received in opposition. I did not, we did not receive any phone calls or comments in favor.
I think there's another page.
That's for another case. That's for the other, the other case, they're just stapled together.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just a second. Are you finished?
I am. Do you still have the...
You want to go about the closing, the public hearing? You want the public hearing?
We'll make the announcement as procedural here about other, anybody wishing to speak on this case publicly. Hearing none, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and I will recognize Commissioner Travis, who has an inquiry.
Thank you. Carrie, did I hear you right? This land was prior, prior was painted?
I didn't mention that at this point, but I did earlier. It was a painting business, and there was some waste found on the site that's been removed. It's been inspected by the DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, had come out.
Inspected. I guess my question is, right now, is residential protected?
That's correct.
Was it residential protected when the previous painter was there?
I can't answer positively to that question, but is it, if it's something that was there before 1986? Do any of you all know, or Mr. Kidd or Charlie? It was there before the, it was there before the ordinance was granted, so it was a grandfathered, if you will, business.
Okay, but I'm glad you brought it up that we've inspected it, and the present owner is going to be cleaning up the area. I think that's a big step in the right direction. Hopefully, we, the new owner will make sure nothing gets in that soil, and I guess the county will probably have an attorney come out and look.
That's right, and the, I don't know if I mentioned, it was the state hazardous waste staff and environmental quality staff that came, both came down with Ben, the code enforcement officer, so Ben's going to follow up on it. But it is actually as of now, as of the 8th, the last bit was being removed.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, just quickly, one of our citizens had a concern about paint or other things being poured on the soil. Is this, is this a valid concern?
Only if the, I mean, it, it shouldn't be because the, the building that he's going to build will be outfitted for spray painting booths. I understand that, right, you're doing...
I'm not going to do no spraying.
So he's not even going to do spraying? It's all going to be contained inside?
Paint offsite, come back.
Yeah.
Exactly. Candace, I used the rolling brush that I didn't want, I might have to lay out there, but there, there will never be no spraying. I'm not doing that.
So I, I am not concerned because he's building...
You don't know about previous spills of paint or solvents?
There, what we found was pre, was sand, paint sand, paint dust from, from sandblasting, yeah. But, I mean, I, I don't, it's any more than anyone might violate an ordinance, and we have really good code enforcement officers.
That's been cleaned up, and this is going to be part of the conditional regulations you're going to lay on?
Absolutely. Well, it is, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrie, essentially, though, right now, our decision is, does this piece of property meet the criteria to be rezoned to light industrial?
That's correct.
The mitigating of any existing materials on that property would be part of the development phase, which would come later on when he goes through the site plan review with conditions.
Yes, sir, and this light, this site plan will be, go through the technical review committee.
The technical review, so that will be where...
So fire, fire marshal...
Anything on that property that needs to be mitigated that may be a hazardous material, that's when that will be handled.
That's right, and DEQ...
We're looking at just this piece of property.
Sorry.
Does it meet the criteria to be rezoned light industrial?
That's correct.
And to follow on, this means you feel that it's in keeping with the existing land ordinance compliance, yeah?
I do, because the business will be in an enclosed building, and it's very much like you would expect in a home occupation. The difference, the reason he's rezoned, because he isn't going to be living there.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
And I also understand that the property was used for, I guess, a similar purpose in the past.
And I, that's correct.
You would, you wouldn't know if any of these complainants tonight also complained when the other owner had it about the operation?
They, I don't know that. I can't tell you that. I do know that at the planning board meeting, they never, no one ever mentioned the previous, they mentioned their previous business was there, but they didn't mention any violations or nuisances that they experienced.
Mr. Chairman, Carrie, there was, did you hear from anybody on the Calvary roadside? The folks that are going to see the traffic coming in and out?
And I don't believe we did, the, the bulk of the attendance was from the road behind property.
Okay. And that, the Calvary Road was where they would be required to get their, is Calvary Road a state-maintained road, or is that a problem?
It is, and they'll need a driveway permit.
So they'll have to go through the DOT process.
It has a driveway already.
Yeah.
It has two gates there. This is a gate, this is a large gate. This is state-kept and maintained. But yeah, the only way the interest in this property is on Calvary Road.
That's, yeah, because you'd have to get through a ditch on the other side of it.
I made the state clear to him many years ago.
I have no. Mr. Chairman, the only other thing that I would add is, I don't know if our applicant has anything that he wants to rebut that was shared with us.
We normally haven't.
That is, that is an option, but I believe we're about ready to move on, unless some of you have questions for the applicant. Commissioner Hall, one of the complainants to this mentioned your involvement. I'm, I'm willing to ask for a motion to allow you absolution from voting on this particular issue.
Yes, and I can state the legal standard for a land use, land use matter, such as before the board now, is that a board member shall not vote where the outcome of the matter is reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact.
Do I hear a motion to allow absolution for Commissioner Hall?
Well, just for clarification, Commissioner Hall, are you involved in a business relationship involving this property with the applicant?
No.
Okay.
This is over.
I know this is overkill, but I'll be glad to make that motion, but I just wanted that for the record as well.
It is definitely overkill, and we have checked it out ahead, but thank you for your motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
And second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed by nay. So are we ready for a motion from any of the commissioners regarding this case?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request for 2020-01 and all analysis and statements too.
Second. Moving to second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Let's record show four to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Mr. Kidd, you are dismissed.
Hey, hey, good luck.
We would be happy to have you stay normally, but this is part of our process.
Matter of fact, Mr. Kidd, you might want to stay. Your wife might like the resolution we got coming out for hairdressers, yeah. You might want to listen to that.
I might go back and listen to it, yes, although with her. Thank you.
Carrie, item B.
If you don't mind my hovering, but it seemed to make sense just to stay up here.
Roy, can you turn the mics up a little bit? I can barely hear her a little bit.
Okay, and now I'm talking more into the mic, so. This is a rezoning case to rezone a property just east of Reedsville from OI to neighborhood commercial conditional zoning. This part, property borders both rural and urban classes, and so I've given you information about both of those land use classes. Planning board heard the case on, on March 9th, and it was then delayed due to COVID. So I've included for your use both descriptions of the rural land class and the urban transition land class. Growth management, excuse me, strategies that are most applicable are, this, this case would promote growth in and around municipalities and other targeted growth areas. And as far as policies, the most relevant policies are economic development. This is a business, a proposed new business, commercial development and planning coordination I put on there because this is very close to the city of Reedsville, near ETJ, and we did coordinate with Reedsville to ensure that there wasn't a, not a hearing issue, but just that, that it was in keeping with their land use plan for that area of the city. The property is located, as you see, just east of 29. It's two properties being proposed for a ice cream shop. The gentleman would be purchasing these properties to, to, to build, or to use an existing building, excuse me, to convert to an ice cream store, and I believe he also has a food truck business that he would likely operate out of there. Uses that would be permitted on the property are based on this list of, or of permitted uses with those that are prohibited crossed out, and again, you have that in your packet. There were no calls or emails in support or opposition. I will, I will say the property owner has spoken to me throughout the process, and I know that he is, he's very much in, in favor of the case. I will come back here. There is a fire station, a church, I'm just, I'm just looking at highlights of the staff report, was previously zoned, community shopping and office industrial, so there's been a non-residential use there for some time. Otherwise, I do feel that, staff feels that this proposal does meet the land use plan and UDO and recommends approval.
Is the owner here?
I believe he is. I'll make sure that they.
Does he wish to make presentation?
But not, I'm sorry, not the owner, but the, the potential property owner is here, the owner of the business.
Does he wish to make comment?
He does, he signed up to make one.
No, he didn't.
He's out there. Mr. Mr. Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm going to step out so that he can step in.
Thank you.
Is this public here? Is this public here?
Yeah, it's going to.
This is not a public hearing?
He's a potential owner. He's part of the, he's presentation.
The applicant chooses not to speak after all.
That's fine. Then I'm going to declare the public hearing open, and anyone wishing to address this commission in regard to this particular case may do so at this time. I have none signed up at this point, just to be totally conversant with everybody. Ms. Spencer, do you know of anybody that might want to comment for or against this?
I do not, we didn't receive even phone calls. The next piece of that is for the last case on the agenda.
This is Savannah Road.
Pardon? That's for the, the, the third zoning 2020-09.
Okay.
Other, just other than the, the applicant himself being supportive of wanting to start this business there and the property owner.
Ice cream shop is fairly innocuous, I would say.
Can't wait, I love ice cream.
Hearing no desire for comment, I declare the public hearing closed. Do we have inquiry by any of the commissioners? Do we have motion by any of the commissioners?
I'm, I'll make a motion for approval of 20 dash, I mean, 2020-07 with analysis and statements?
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Further comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Therefore, it is approved. Can we go to item C, please, Ms. Spencer?
Rezoning case 2020-09 is a case to rezone the first 60 acres of a property near the intersection of NC, well, at the intersection of NC 65 and 220. The request is for residential agriculture and residential mixed to light industrial. This is a straight rezoning, the applicant has requested a straight rezoning, so any of the uses that are allowed in light industrial will be allowed, and I can go over those in a minute. These parcels are located in the economic development land class of the land use plan. The planning board heard it on the 11th of May. Here we go. Just an outline of the economic development land class, which is very much in keeping with this request. Applicable growth management strategies are prioritizing areas where water and utilities should be upgraded, identifying key growth areas, promoting growth in and around targeted growth areas, and incorporating land use policies that diversify the economy based on the request for light industrial. Policy guidelines that apply, there are several in this case, economic development, transportation based on the location of the highway there, excuse me, water and sewer services, industrial development, and environmental quality, that one is highlighted because this property does happen to be located within a watershed, water supply watershed, and so they will be subject to environmental review, and the fact that water and sewer services are a very environmentally friendly way to grow land use, or to grow developed properties. Here you see, the properties are located just at the, just on the south side of Highway 65. And an aerial view, the, it's difficult to see, the, the mixed use part of it is up in the northern corner, it used to be a mobile home park. Here again is the, are the properties themselves. Uses that would be permitted are all uses in the light industrial zoning district. It is, it's important to note at this point that there is a heavy industrial zoning district as well as a light industrial zoning district, and as you probably know, the heavy industrials district is the one that has hazardous materials, noxious materials, more intense industrial uses such as would not be allowed in the watershed at any case, anyway. There are a lot of those, those uses that wouldn't be allowed in the watershed, so this is not the highest intensity of industrial use. Uses that could be permitted with extra standards. Some highlights are the fact that this is a key growth interchange, they are subject to the watershed protection ordinance, they are going to be served, the plan is to serve them by public water and sewer, there will be state-level permitting approvals required due to the, the size of the property, and, and the technical review, technical review committee again will have to review a development site plan. This is another case that the, there's going to be many, many questions that will be applicable to the development of the site after the, after the fact, and I, I myself don't know and shouldn't know what is planned for that site. At this point, we're just looking at the rezoning for it, so. That technical review committee I didn't mention earlier, there is a seat on that committee for the local state representative of DEQ. So it's a, it's a good, robust representative committee.
Well, you've talked about this a lot, are you worried about toxicity?
Well, industrial, industrial use and watershed, I would have been if the, if there was a heavier, not in this zoning district though, no.
You would always talk about it.
Pardon?
You would always address those.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, oh, I don't, yeah.
All right, I haven't declared a public hearing yet, but I do have an inquiry because I have seen part of it, but this is going to fall in your lap.
Sure.
And this is a complaint about notification.
Yes.
May I ask if all standard notifications were made on this property?
Yes, sir, all property owners within 1,000 feet.
And said property owners would have had access to the application had they desired?
Yes, absolutely.
That's good.
And staff, and we're welcomed, I, I feel like I put a lot of information out welcoming people to comment about this hearing in these unusual times.
Questions before we open the hearing, gentlemen, for Ms. Spencer? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing open. We do have three individuals that have signed up to speak, and I'd like to start with Mr. James Gunter.
Price and, Price and Carrie. Just, just so, so you know what's happening is that applicants are listening to one another in the other room so that they can hear the full presentation and then come in, that's the delay.
They're bringing one or two people down. Just one, you can stay in here.
One at a time.
Well, you can stay here.
Okay. We need the applicant first. We need the applicant first. Is the applicant not going to speak?
Roy Carroll's not here.
Mark, did you mean to call the applicant?
Is the applicant, if the applicant's here, come ahead. Then I've done this out of order, I didn't think the applicant was here. Who's here? Oh, I know the applicant. Give us your name and address.
My name is Robbie Perkins, my address is 348 North Elm Street, Greensboro, North Carolina.
Normally, you would have made your comments as the applicant, but we've already started our public hearing, and I think this is justifiably part of it. Would you address this rezoning?
Yes, well, thank you for having us here tonight. I represent South Rockingham Corporate Park LLC, it's, which is owned by Mr. Roy Carroll, Carroll Companies. Tonight, Mr. Al Leonard, who is senior vice president with the company, is here with me. Of course, we go over 10 if he comes in the room. We are requesting rezoning for 60 acres of the 240-odd acres that Mr. Carroll's companies own in this area, being the first parcel in what we hope is going to be a, a first-class corporate park for Rockingham County. So we're here to answer any questions, but this is the start.
Questions for Mr. Perkins? I think not. We are very interested in everything you're doing, and we followed it closely for some length of time, therefore, don't be surprised that we don't ask questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
And also, we have signed up Mr. James Gunter?
We've got the other applicant that was waiting in the other room.
Is he part of the applicant? I thought he was staff.
Mr. Leonard may be in the other room as well, as the other part of the applicant.
Who's coming? Mr. Leonard?
Actually, this is, this is Mr. Gunnar's.
Ms. Gunnar, that's Gunnar. No, come on.
I, I think it, I've already put these guys into the public hearing parts, so sequence is not important at this point.
Well, thanks, guys, thanks for having me, and thanks for, thanks for your time today, I certainly appreciate it. My wife and I, my name is, for the record, my name is James William Gunnar II. My wife and I are of 517 Auger Mill Road, and maybe if you're, since they have the map up, we actually own the parcels due south of that quite a bit, basically south of there that extends all the way to the, to the next road. Our family plot is there, my family house is there that we've built recently, we've invested a lot of time and money and effort in there. I say that to say that we're actually, don't, don't, don't expect me to come in here to be against this. I think we're, we're concerned about it, just that we want to make sure, and, and we came and spoke at the planning board meeting last week. You know, this has come to us pretty quickly, and that's, that's, we understand that you guys are hitting the timelines accordingly, and thank you for all your help, we do appreciate that. Here are a couple of things for us, what's important to us. One is, and when you talk about the water, it is important, a lot of people are talking about the watershed, that was a mobile home park, there were septic systems on it, there were wells on it, we, we understand, and we got briefed last week on the, from the planning board meeting that the, the next step is to have a technical review meeting. That's, that's frankly, we kind of, we understand what the corporation is trying to do here. We're actually kind of surprised, to be honest with you, that there wasn't a little bit more of a, of an intentional map of the area, and my wife and I lived in Apex, North Carolina for about five years after we were married, and in Apex, and that was a very high-growth area, I think we went from under 10,000 people to about 40,000 people in about a span of less than six, seven years. That town had a, took an intentional approach towards, this is where the development, this is where commerce was, this is where the, this is where the communities are going to be. what, that there's going to be significant growth, it makes a lot of sense for the interstate and the, and the airport, but there's no real plan here, so what it seems to be is that it's going to be trip and driving, and I think that's our biggest concern around this. Specifically on the property.
Carry on, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, all right. Specifically on the property, we are concerned about the wells being capped, we know the mobile harm, mobile home park that was there, we're very, very confident that the, both the in-ground septic systems and the water systems were there, as you're going to be developing an office park, I'm excited to hear him phrase a, a class act office park, so I'll take him at his word on that, but, but we want to make sure that that, that well water, not just the runoff, because I'm assuming you're going to have to have buffer for the creek that borders or that's part of that property, to make sure that that's all capped off accordingly. That is our biggest concern around this, my wife and I, as I said, you know, we've invested pretty significantly in there, we've actually bought parcels ourselves in the, in recent time, so we understand that the growth is there, and what you're, what you're charged with as a, as a commission is to, you know, does it meet the criteria? And, and I understand where you're probably going to be at from your, from your decision, decision-making, but I would, I would like to challenge the commission to look at that area, have a, you know, open up and, and kind of have a plan in that area rather than react to 60 acres here, 100 acres there, 75 here, I don't see how you can really develop about, I think there's probably three to five somewhere 100 acres in that group right there, and I think it's a great place to have it, but let's, let's, let's do a plan and, and put it in place, that's, that's our feedback.
Well, Mr. Leonard, we appreciate you coming and sharing your opinions.
Yep.
Can I mention one thing?
Yes, you may.
Just for your information, we've actually initiated the process for a land use plan that's county-wide, and actually updating that plan, that is scheduled to be complete January, February, it's a fairly lengthy process.
Okay, and is there public, public input into that?
There will be over time, there will be a public hearing once, once we get to a point of adopting that, but yes, the governing body, over time, did not keep that up to date, and we're in the process of, of doing that.
Sure, you now have an interstate in the middle of the county, right?
Right.
So, need a plan around.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a little out of order, but Carrie, his concern about capped wells, won't that be part of the review process?
It will, there, there'll be, a lot of that will be taken care of during site reading, actually during site prep, but Angel and Jake from Environmental Health are part of the technical review committee as well, and actually, I spoke to them about it and brought up that concern from the planning board, so they're, they're aware, I think they have to.
Okay. Mr. Leonard, once again, I thank you.
Gunner.
Gunter.
Gunner.
Thank you.
I lived in Cary, North Carolina, when there were less than 1,000 people, so Apex is not really that significant a growth. Now, Mr. Gunter.
That was Mr. Gunnar.
Oh, no, that was, I thought, Mr. Leonard then. Well, you can't tell your players without a program. If you guys will be patient as soon as we get this. Is Mr. Leonard coming, Ms. Spencer?
Is Al Leonard going to speak?
He's going okay, sheriff got involved.
He's good.
He's good.
He's good, he's.
Public notification for anybody that wishes to speak at this time, hearing none? I'm going to ask Ms. Spencer to read this in. Would you read into the record the comments of Ms. Cindy Nelson?
I will. One citizen submitted comments in opposition, this was submitted prior to the planning board meeting on May 11th, but I felt it fair to go ahead and read it in at this point. Cindy Nelson, 389 Sylvania Road, I would like to see the application for this rezoning, she has seen this application and discussed it with staff. I would like to oppose it for the following reasons, there is too much traffic in this area already, you have traffic coming off 68 to 65, you have 73 traffic and 220 traffic all coming in this area, there is already a troublesome industrial site across the street from this area that has trucks pulling out onto the road, burning fires in a, in an area that if got out of hand would be very dangerous. With all the equipment around it, it is also very unattractive to view from the road. Any industrial building in this area would be a complete quagmire, this has always been a desirable part of Rockingham County, the houses in this area are well-kept and nice. This area of Rockingham County cannot handle residential and light industrial together, there are other parts of Rockingham County to develop other than this area that would be advantageous to the citizens. This has nothing but disaster written on it, I do not want it rezoned, nor do my neighbors, I have not seen any application to rezon. Again, I'm quoting verbatim, but we have spoken to her about the case and shared all the material that we have with this citizen. I've also looked into, I think that's Yates Construction, across the street, we'll, it's a grandfathered construction site, but we'll make sure there aren't any violations present.
Any other questions for Ms. Spencer? Now I will declare the public hearing closed, and open the session for comment or motion from the commissioners here gathered.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, but I would like to make a motion to approve. He's under request.
Oh nine.
20 dash.
Oh nine.
29. Just a little statement now.
Second, moved on second, further discussion, questions, hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed by nay. The ayes have it, 5-0. And we're about to go to item eight, is that correct, Lance? I'm going to declare a five-minute recess for physical reasons, and so, gentlemen, if you would be back by 20:32.
I declare it back in session, recognize County Manager Lance Meckler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners, it's an honor and pleasure to be in front of you today to present this budget, it was a very difficult time, but I'll jump into it. In light of creating a fiscally sound budget during the COVID-19 pandemic, I think that our budget team did an excellent job, if you'll look up there, Paul Murray, Patricia Gallary, and Justin Thacker, they did a really good job, particularly Paul, I appreciate all of his effort and support in this budget process, as he normally does a fantastic job. In this slide, you'll see your vision, mission, and strategic focus areas that you all approved earlier in the year, and it's where we based our budget development from. There are two major impacts from COVID-19 on our budget process, first, the revenue uncertainty, this is my 26th budget that I put together and have never experienced working on one like this under so much uncertainty, with sales tax, the motor vehicle taxes, and other revenue sources. Second, we had to reallocate staff from their normal duties to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, so this is one of the worst times to have to go through the budget process with this pandemic, because this was the highest time that me and all managers across the state of North Carolina had to deal with, with the COVID, at the same time putting together a budget for the commissioners. The recommended budget represents the best information that we have at the present time. Our guiding principles were to have no property tax rate increase, recognize the impact of COVID-19, and try to maintain essential service delivery to citizens. After we received all requests, we had a general budget deficit of $11.5 million or equivalent to 15.3 cents of the property tax rate. Again, this budget does not represent a property tax increase, this is the 11th consecutive year with no county property tax increase. The total general fund budget is close to $93 million, which represents a 1.6% increase from the current year's adopted budget. All funds included, including the enterprise funds, were $130,874,220, and just for point of reference, the, the value of the penny has increased by $11,911 to, to $752,933. Our current abhorrent, abhorrent is 52.3 million, or an increase of $757,886. The abhorrent is the largest source of discretionary revenue, and are, have four different components, the real estate is, is projected to increase by 2.7%, or an increase of approximately $950,000 in revenue, personal property is projected to increase 1.7%, or an increase of $80,000 in revenue, and just the opposite, public utilities is projected to decrease by 2%, or a decrease of $120,000 of lost revenue, and motor vehicles is projected to decrease by 2.8%, or a decrease of $150,000 in revenues. We've seen the biggest impact by COVID-19 between sales tax and motor vehicle tax to the tune of about $1.6 million, and this includes the loss of anticipated increase in both sales tax and motor vehicles prior to COVID-19. We're estimating a 7% decrease, or $725,000 in sales tax, and you're wondering why that's so low, because we're not like the surrounding counties, the rural, the urbanized counties like Wake and Mecklenburg and Guilford and Almonds, so we don't depend on that as much as they, they do. We are expecting to receive 1.9 million from the quarter cent sales tax that will go to the community college. Just some other key changes in revenues that I want to touch base on, we expect to see an increase of $400,000 from EMS fees, from actual experience in the current year and the requested fee increase that we're requesting. The budget includes the final payment from the Kate B. Reynolds grant for the final payment of $262,623. DSS revenues will increase by over $1 million, this is due to increase in retirement and health insurance, as well as cost allocating staff at a higher reimbursement, and I'd like to give Phyllis and her staff praises for their hard work on this, because they are able to maximize the cost allocation with our health department, with their staff there. It is obvious that the interest earned would decrease with the onset of COVID-19 pandemic to the tune of $181,108. We are budgeting a slight decrease of fund balance appropriated this year from last year, this appropriation is for the fund balance plug that we use each year, and that consists of expected unearned Duke Energy incentive dollars, funding from the public health escrow funds, and funding from Kate B. Reynolds for the integrative health program. Moving on to expenditures from revenues, we had a request of almost 23 additional positions, but only recommending three full-time positions, making a part-time position to a full-time position, and hiring a part-time staff member. At the animal shelter, we need an animal shelter technician to address and increase the number of animals, and to stay in compliance with state regulations based on the number of animals per attendee. A social service accounting technician for increasing requirements, audit costs, audits, cost allocations, and succession planning, that's a big part of it, the succession planning. A dental clinic administrative assistant, one position due to the current increase and anticipated increase of patients, we have seen upswing, uptick in our patients, and we're speculating to continue, to continue to see that uptick. And finally, making the part-time EMS convalescent scheduler into a full-time position, this has been a great move for the county, you all have done this in the past with your budget, and we'll discuss it further at the budget workshop, but she has done a fantastic job in helping us schedule. I've included a tentative 1.5% cost of living adjustment to begin in January if, and only if revenues are not impacted more than we're projecting. The total COLA has a budget impact of $225,000, staff and I will evaluate the economic conditions and the revenue trends, and make a recommendation at the end of the year for your consideration. I've also included a $300,000, $300,000 for a one-third study, targeted at keeping high demand positions at market, so we don't continue to lose staff to surrounding counties, you know, we've talked about building inspections in the past, we've talked about EMS, environmental health, and other such sensitive positions that require a lot of certifications. The retirement system board voted to increase the percentage of an employee's salary, the county must contribute in January of this past year, just to, the general, general employees increase from 8.95% to 10.15%, and law enforcement increase from 9.7% to 10.9%, this increase has an impact of $300,000 on the budget. These local contributions will continue to increase, and reach its high, for instance, for the general employees, 12.45% in the year 2022, 2023. Based on actual experience in the current year, we are anticipating a 10% increase, or $564,000 in health insurance. The Medicare supplemental plan provided to post-65 retirees reflects an increase of $185,000 at the renewal that took place at the beginning of this year. $100,000 is recommended to be used from the health insurance fund balance to help cover the cost, and the county is very fortunate, and I'd like to take credit for this for my time, to have a very healthy health insurance fund balance. Other significant capital costs in general fund, it is recommended that we set aside $225,000 each year for IT core infrastructure replacement, and this is to replace key network components such as servers, switch, switches, power backup, et cetera. This upcoming year, we'll need to replace our network switches to decrease bottlenecking that impacts our network speed. We had to construct eight sediment traps when the firing range was built a few years ago, which was required by DEQ, the county has been backfilling one of these traps every year. After this upcoming year, we'll have five more to backfill, the cost to backfill the sediment traps is $58,338. We purchased Axon body cameras for the sheriff's department a few years ago, according to the agreement, Axon replaces all body cameras and docks every two and a half years to ensure proper functioning and that the equipment is up to date, the cost for the payment plan we have is $38,188. I am recommending the replacement of the following vehicles, as we do normally, replace two high-maintenance ambulances, one remount and one new four-by-four, replace the EMS training officer's vehicle due to age and high mileage, replace six frontline patrol cars and one detective's vehicles, vehicle, replace one of the building inspection vehicle with high mileage, replace an old vehicle environmental health, and replace four vehicles in DSS. Another significant capitals and other funds would be the landfill fund, we recommend to replace an existing rolloff with 16,000 hours on it, and it's at the end of its useful life, the cost of it's $180,000. A new automatic tarping machine, the existing is the older machine, and with the opening of the new cell, we will need additional capacity to cover the open faces daily, the cost of this is almost $70,000. In our water and sewer funds, the budget includes a recommendation to complete replacing generators for all our sewer lift stations to reduce overflow from power outages, this will add two generators from the cost, and the cost of 154,000 that will come from the sewer fund balance. This cost also includes moving the ones that we have at our existing sites to Huntsville and Bethany Water Tanks, because the generators we have there now can't accommodate the lift stations that we have. Replace the 2011 Ford F-150 truck in the water department, the current truck will have over 200,000 miles on it, it's not in good condition, the cost of this replacement is $28,385. We received the public schools budget this past Friday, and they are requesting 9.5% increase in its current expense allocation, and almost an $8 million increase in their capital outlay request. The recommended budget maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and capital outlay, the schools will have close to $4 million in their capital fund balance at the end of next fiscal year if they don't spend any of this year, and that's restricted totally towards their capital. RCC requested a 9% increase in current expense and a 33% increase in capital outlay, the recommended budget maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and capital outlay, the value of the quarter cent sales tax again is 1.9 million, is transferred, it will be transferred to the community college. And just in conclusion, the departments, department heads and staff were very effective at meeting deadlines and sharing information during this time of uncertainty with the COVID-19 pandemic, we used all the tools we had in order to provide a sound, balanced budget that preserves funding for county services while recognizing impacts from the pandemic. The budget ensures that the county will continue to provide citizens and the colleges the quality of services that they need and deserve. And the next steps, we'll have a work session, the board and staff will have a budget work session on May 26th, starting at 8:00 a.m. in the commissioners' room, and that we would ask that you all set the public hearing date for the June 1st meeting, the first meeting in June, June 1st. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments at this time?
I would ask that you all reserve the questions until you had a chance to review the budget and ask me at that time.
I got a general question, Mr. Chair. We have a general question.
Yes, sir.
All right. Lance, I'm sure the, we talked a little bit earlier about capital request, and you shared with me that you thought there would be very limited capital. And you shared with me that you thought there would be very limited capital request initially. And then we would address any capital needs as the fiscal year moved on because it was, it was just going to be difficult at this point in time to anticipate revenues fully. And I was kind of under the gun to try to get this done. So there is some room in here, I think, in your proposed budget for any future capital needs that may pop up during the fiscal year that you just didn't have an opportunity to fully evaluate. Is that correct?
We have a capital improvement plan. The county does. We, we're not implementing that this year because we just don't have the excess revenues. If we do see revenues extend better than what we see, then we can certainly add stuff back to that.
Yes, sir. Okay. And there is a justification inclusion here for all the capital that you've already asked for.
Yes. And there's money in there. I forgot to mention, there's, there's some funds in there. I know that Commissioner Berger had talked about, and we'll get into it on Tuesday, but funds for capital projects that we have that are not really necessarily dedicated at the moment, but they can be dedicated.
Yes.
Again, it was a difficult time and I mean, it's, we're under pressure to get it done. Everything was going smooth up until this pandemic hit and then it was just very, very difficult to get done.
Well, for sure, you're correct. You can anticipate lots of questions next Tuesday.
We'll appreciate those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the public hearing on, I think you said June 1st.
June 1st.
That we add this to the agenda on June 1st for public hearing.
Motion made about public hearing. And seconded, further discussion? I don't see any problem with it. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. Are you finished with item eight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Susan Young has been gracious enough to keep us updated on the efforts by the county, our health department on COVID-19. And I'd ask her to come share.
Good evening, gentlemen. So all this COVID-19 that Lance was just talking about, I'm here to give you guys a high-level update of what's going on at the state and the county at this time. So where are we currently? As the state of North Carolina, we have 19,000 and about 23 cases. Hospitalizations are 511. We have 661 deaths currently. Here in Rockingham County, we have 49 cases, three hospitalizations and two deaths. If I get the right button to forward, this would be nice.
Susan, if I could ask you a quick question on that number that you presented, the 49, that includes those who have recovered. That are not 49 active cases?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's the question I had too. Especially the states, is it 19,000? How many of those are active cases right now that are still waiting to recover?
We have a new, we were trying to decide ourselves when we considered somebody recovered. And the state just has recently given us information on what they are deeming as recovered. And basically, it's 14 days without any symptoms. They're considering a person recovered. So we're looking back and we're having to call our patients and also make sure they're not currently experiencing any further symptoms before we can count them as recovered. So that's our informatics is reflecting our recovered cases within our county.
So in the county, how many do we have?
Currently, I don't have the information right now, but I can get that for you, but it is on the informatics page. Currently, this is the ages of our cases. You can see the most cases are ages 41 to 50. 51 to 60 is our next age group. And that is kind of what is reflected across the state itself. The sex is about equal. We have just a few more gentlemen than ladies. So it's right at 51% and 40-some percent for the ladies. This is not working for me.
Does that work?
Nope. Let's try this button. That's still not working. Next.
Why are you waiting? The problem I have is everybody keeps talking about the number of cases, but that's not a true number. That's what's happening right now. Like in Rockingham County, I think you said 49 active, I mean positive cases. But really, in Rockingham County, it's probably three positive cases.
No, there's more than three because we have three people that are actually in the hospital currently.
Right. See what I'm saying? It's either seven or four or whatever. I mean, it's a very low number that is actually positive right now.
Right. Yes. Right now, the number of individuals that are currently sick is a low number.
Maybe it's a way on your update daily that we can have like that number saying this. Because we have 49 so far since the start of this, but really only seven or eight positive cases.
Well, that's reflected in the informatics. You can see what, where the patients are, if how many are recovered and how many are still sick and how many are hospitalized. That, that is reflected there. The cases by townships are shown here. And of course, your more populated areas, Eden and Reesville have more cases. But we have spread across the whole county, as you can see, Summerfield, Ruffin, Stanville, Stokesdale and Madison also have cases. Yes.
All the commissioners, you still have that one thing that she sent out that you don't let her know because you click on that, she changes that every time.
Every day. And I do want to say that if you don't see it change, that means we may not have a positive case that day, but you will see the date change. So you will know that it's been updated that day.
I like what you've been posting on Facebook. That's what everybody seems like they like. But you, I don't really like what you've been sending before. I like to see the whole big picture.
Right.
So if you can send both of them, if it's the way you can send both of them in their email. The much she sends you on the.
It's shared. You should be able to get it. It's a live and breathing document. You should be able to see it each and every time. Every time it's changed and updates. Are any of you guys getting, okay?
It's very useful. Thank you, Susan.
I'm not holding my mouth right, obviously.
Yeah, Wally's coming up to fix this. A technical point, Susan, you know, Summerfield, those are not really townships.
While Derek's fixing this, Susan, as my colleague stated earlier, Commissioner Travis, I do think it would be very beneficial. I get the spreadsheet that you have and that's great. However, like, like Commissioner Travis said, I think it would be, it would be interesting to me to see, even if it was just bold, of the ones that are still active. You know what I'm saying? If we got that low number of active cases in the county, one, it gives me an idea of the status of all the cases.
Right.
And because, well, for me, I just think that, that data, it would be very beneficial.
If we consider them recovered, basically, if they are recovered, we technically close that case.
But it's still listed as one of our, I think, 49 cases. And we're, in actuality, we may have 12 active cases in the county.
12 that we are still following, that still we are checking on and still have symptoms.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Young. The ones who are listed as asymptomatic.
Right.
Do you consider that a recovered case or an active case?
We consider those recovered. They never had symptoms in the beginning. They were just found because they were contacts to another case and we were looking for who had made someone else sick that could have potentially been in the hospital or could, who was sick and did have symptoms. Some of those people never showed any symptoms. Those are the people that are walking around and do not have any symptoms at all that you would never know that were sick.
But they have tested positive?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it's very, those people are the most concerning because they could be making other people sick and no one know about it.
Susan, another point just to add to Commissioner Berger. That one you posted on Facebook, I get a lot of feedback. Everybody likes it. I think if you can kind of break it down for people because they don't want to do the math in their head.
Right.
Saying this is how many active cases we have in the county. But also, saying to them on that sheet, who we test. I mean, I know we test only those that show symptoms or who have been around a positive person. So maybe a little insert there to say, hey, this is why our tests are so low. You know, if you want to get your own personal test, go to your doctor or something like that. But the county's not going to pay for you to get, because you want to get a test.
Right. And I will discuss that a little farther down the line about community testing and how, how testing is going to change a little bit. Because it is changing since it began. The, actually, the state has changed their criteria and also we're looking at changing it here in the county. Here is a little slide about the outbreaks or industry cases that we've had so far. Bojangles had a case earlier on in Madison. They did a lot of appropriate things. Ruger has had a case, KDH, you guys just probably saw that in the newspaper. And there's multiple outbreaks in connecting counties that our cases are connected to with other long-term care facilities, correctional facilities and things like that that do affect our county because, you know, our people travel outside the county. And this is a little explanation of why our county cases are so low. We had frequent and early messaging. We had early collaboration through countywide task force. And then we kind of did an internal task force and that is still meeting twice a week. We had early PPE, which is personal protective equipment distribution to the physicians, the long-term care facilities. And anybody who really called us and was really in need of PPE to see patients, we tried to provide that in the beginning. Partnerships with our local hospitals, they came and spoke with you guys, our emergency managers, the sheriff's department and the sheriff himself, and our long-term care facilities, we have a good working relationship with them. Also, Health and Human Services, we took on a collaborative approach where we got the social workers involved. They are still currently calling the long-term care facilities twice a week and they have a spreadsheet. They're asking them a list of questions. Do you have enough PPE? Do you have enough staff? Or is anyone there sick currently? What are you doing? Do you need anything from us? And I think that's very important. Industries were very willing to clean their workspace and to actually shut down for a period of time and allow workers to go home. Actually, Bojangles shut down for two weeks. And that really helped early on in the spread. The collaboration with the mayors and the city managers and the sharing of ideas. Lance and I were on a call basically once a week on Fridays with the sheriff to decide, you know, if they needed anything further, if we could help and just to have ideas shared. So it was very good collaboration. We do have some weaknesses still here in the county. The PPE supply shortages kind of crippled everybody in the beginning, but that is kind of self-correcting. We have resources now coming through emergency management. We're also able to order PPE. And I know you heard Lance speak in the budget, some of monies that we receive for COVID, we have been using to get some PPE and things that we needed. Lack of community testing, and that has been kind of a thorn all through this. But we are working on some collaboratives with Cone Health and our FQHC Casual Medical Center. We're going to be on a conference call Tuesday. They actually received some grant funding and they're going to have a mobile unit come here within the county and do some testing. So we're kind of super excited about that. And that unit can be placed in hotspots, as you call it, that we would need more testing. So we're kind of excited about finally getting some community testing. And Billy Crumton with the Casual FQHC, they have taken over James Austin here in town. We're going to work with them too to provide more testing. So, and I think that's what everyone wants, more testing, more testing. But that comes with a caveat. If I got tested today and I'm negative, if I come into contact with somebody on Thursday that's positive, you know, I may be positive by Saturday. If I'm not tested again, you won't know that. So just take it with a grain of salt. You may be negative today, but you could be positive two or three days later, depending on if you come into contact with a person who is sick. We had virus changeability. You guys know this is a ever-changing virus. The symptoms have changed, the onset has changed, the timeframe of the illness have changed. We were looking at people at certain points now, you know, 14 days, then we roll back to 10. So some things have changed. Isolation periods have changed and that has changed with guidance about healthcare workers and the general population. Staff fatigue, we actually, I've actually been doing this since the second week of February, believe it or not. Basically, it's been my job. The amount of staff we had in the beginning, my communicable disease nurse was out on leave. She has been back and has been working seven days a week. We have all been working seven days a week and Lance's department head staff have, we have all been working around the clock on this, basically. And the enforcement of the stay-at-home orders, I mean, and the basic orders in, even in Walmart or even in Lowe's. It's hard to have somebody police which aisle people are going up and down. People are doing a good job policing themselves, believe it or not. But it's hard to have people who would police that. And where do we go from here? We're going to open up the county. I'm sure we're going to follow the governor's state of emergency, our laws and ordinances. We're going to continue to increase contact tracing. And we have done that. We have ramped up our testing. We are testing between six, eight or 10 people a day. So our testing has ramped up. And we hope to increase the community testing that I was talking about earlier. So we're hoping to do that.
Just a minute. So are we still paying $199 per test?
Yes, sir. There is some funding for people who do not, cannot afford a test that are uninsured. There is some monies that we can test there. And I know you guys have probably seen the tent go up across from Annie Penn. There is a testing site there, a big marquee sign, but that is, from what I understood, was only for pre-op patients. So it's not doing any community-wide testing currently, but that could change, they said. But right now, it's basically for pre-op and other certain people. Social distancing needs to continue. It works to decrease the spread of the virus and we're continuing to do that in this room tonight. The danger zone is less than six feet apart in an enclosed space for greater than 10 minutes. You need to wear a mask if you're in public areas. It protects others. And wash your hands frequently for 20 seconds. These are things that, that work. These are the resources that you can use that has a lot of information. Our website is a plethora of information on there and links that you can just click on to find information. Do you guys have any more questions? I know you've kind of stopped me along the way, but do you have anything else? We have 281 negatives that we have tested, 49 positive, which equates to 0.05% of Rockingham County's population. Just a fun fact.
Commissioners?
I just want to say thank you with your staff, all your hard work. I know the whole county's been working pretty hard and we appreciate it. I know the citizens appreciate it. But thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
All the first responders and stuff there.
It's a team effort for sure.
Definitely. I have to commend Lance and you staff of how you all work together and talk and communicate. And it's very important in this time.
And I think that's one of the main things that I have been impressed by is the collaboration. It has been great, I think. And everybody's pitched together and fought this as a good fight altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. New business, would you care to?
New business?
I believe I have a copy of that. Let me just start there. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Berger, first item in the new business, considers a resolution that we proposed to offer. Mr. Berger?
Yes, sir. Well, people have asked about reopening Rockingham County. We, the governing body, never closed. We never adopted a rule that closed businesses. The county government also did not adopt any rules that closed the schools. We've continued to meet in person, but did alter our seating arrangements to fit the health recommendations. In recent days, people have grown a little weary of the governor's orders. Roy Cooper, along with some localities, took measures to close churches, businesses and schools. This was implemented to allow hospitals and other medical providers to better prepare for an onslaught of extreme cases of the virus. As Cooper's lockdown of the entire state has continued well beyond hospitals being prepared, many people are becoming restless. Over the weekend, we saw Judge Dever block Cooper's order as applicable to churches, protecting the very rights reserved by the Constitution and guaranteed for the people. Judge Devers indicated in his order, there is no pandemic exception to the Constitution. Governor Cooper has indicated he will not continue to fight against your religious freedoms. However, he is still fighting against other constitutional rights the people have been granted, or better yet, were reserved for the people. Article one of the North Carolina Constitution guarantees people the right to enjoy the fruits of their own labors. This has been upheld by the courts over time. Small businesses from hair salons, barbers. has been upheld by the courts over time. Small businesses from hair salons, barbers, gym owners, and others deserve to have their constitutional rights protected as well. These business owners know how to implement practices to make their establishments just as safe as the grocery store or the big box stores. I certainly hope others will extend assurances and guarantees to these business owners and their customers. I can assure you your commissioners have not taken any action to limit your rights. And with that, I believe we do have a resolution that John has prepared. I'd ask that he read that in.
I'd like that read into the record.
Yes, sir, certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Resolution requesting Governor Roy Cooper to consider a regional approach to allow Rockingham County and other rural counties to reopen. Whereas Rockingham County, like many rural counties in North Carolina, has a low number of laboratory confirmed COVID-19 cases and has not experienced the same effect from the pandemic that has transpired in the state's urban counties. And whereas Rockingham County will stay focused and vigilant in, you know, to work with our local and state health officials to monitor COVID-19, to adhere to restrictions and guidelines, and to adjust to impacts from COVID-19 as needed, as COVID-19 numbers may or may not increase. And whereas twenty counties in North Carolina make up roughly 70% of the COVID-19 case count, and whereas the current stay-at-home order and closure of businesses have created a significant hardship on Rockingham County residents, and whereas the Office of the Governor has failed small business owners and employees by denying them the North Carolina constitutional right to the enjoyment of the fruit of their labors, included, but including, but not limited to, hair salon owners and other, and their employees, which have experienced significant economic loss. And whereas closed businesses and unemployed residents will take longer to economically recover based on the length of the stay-at-home order. And whereas due to our rural population of approximately 91,000 citizens, it is achievable for our residents to practice social distancing to prevent further community transmission, more so than urban counties. And whereas the citizens of Rockingham County have complied with CDC and NCDHHS guidelines and can continue to comply with said guidelines without further government intervention. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners request that Governor Roy Cooper consider a regional approach of working with local governments to keep necessary restrictions in place in areas that have been hit hard by the virus while allowing Rockingham County, along with other rural counties, to begin rebuilding and reopening their communities and businesses in a safe and reasonable manner. Adopted this 18th day of May 2020.
Mr. Berger?
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution. I believe we just heard from our health director. I can't remember what percentage, but it was well below 1% of our residents that have tested positive. And as far as the active cases, it's approximately half of our total number of cases. So I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution and forward it to the governor.
Motion to approve, and I might add to Mr. Berger's comments, we have nobody in Rockingham County taking up bid space in either of our hospitals at this time. So it's not like we're sacrificing the capability to support. Motion on the floor.
Second.
And second, further discussion, comment, hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Let the record indicate 5-0 vote in support of the resolution. I am in receipt of a letter from the mayor of Eden requesting that this board consider moving Mrs. McKinney, who has won her primary for the school board, into the position recently vacated by the sad demise of Mr. Kirkman, who represented District Three. And the essence of Mr. Hall's comments are his area, Eden, is not represented, nor has it been significantly represented because of the illness. And he asked this board to take action to fill that slot. I might mention that I have been in contact with the chair of the Rockingham County School Board, and she advises me that the majority of members by telephone poll are in support of this action. So in essence, do I have anybody here that would like to address this? And I'm thinking of you, Mr. Hall, since you live in the area, and you, Mr. Perdell.
I think Reese has a comment.
I just, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think in the letter, I don't know that the mayor actually named anybody.
He, the mayor did not name. He asked for representation.
Representation, but he did not submit or recommend anybody to us. It was just a request to fill the vacant seat. With that said, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion pursuant to session law 2015-38. I move that this board appoint Vicki McKinney to fill the unexpired term vacated by the passing of Wayne Kirkman.
Further question or comment? Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion seconded by Mr. Perdell. Hear no other comment or question?
I just would say that I'd like to extend my condolences to the Kirkman's family and also acknowledge his longtime service to the community as a board member.
Yeah, I would certainly add that, Mr. Perdell, and I believe we both addressed that in our last session. But Mr. Kirkman gave a lot of years' time and effort to service to this county on the school board. Question has been called and seconded. Further comment? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, the board is 5-0 in support. We're going to have to go into a closed session.
What comments?
Oh, wait a minute. We're going to have to go into a closed session shortly. Mr. Metzler, any other new business?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have new business? We'll move to Commissioner comments, starting with Mr. Craig Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to especially thank you out to Senator Bill Berger. Recently, he sent a letter to the governor requesting help to reopen hairdressers and salons. And I just, from, for the citizens, I just want to say thank you to Senator Berger for doing that. I think he recognizes the problem. And I also want to see, I see the sheriffs here, and I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman, if the sheriff can come forward.
Please do. I think we all, despite the masks, recognize the high sheriff of Rockingham County.
That's right. Sheriff, I appreciate you being here. I just want to say thank you on behalf of me and the citizens, especially this past weekend on you addressing the church's situation in the county. And I just want to say thank you. I know it's a lot of citizens out there that says thank you to you. Thank you for taking that first initial step, and thank you for representing the Constitution and keeping your oath. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Perdell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I'd like to thank Lance and all the county employees. I think we heard earlier today from our health director and the Health and Human Services Director how we have employees that's been working seven days a week during these unprecedented times. And all the employees, as far as I'm concerned, have been working diligently to continue to provide the services that are needed in the county. And like I said, these are some unprecedented times. And so I think Lance and his team got together and strategized on the best way to continue to provide these services, and we're very appreciative of that. I also want to thank all the first responders, sheriffs here, all the law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS workers, and rescue squad workers for the things they do every day. And during these times, it's, it makes it, the uncertainty is even greater to every situation that they go in. And lastly, the healthcare workers that are at all of our hospitals and doctors' offices and clinics throughout the county. These folks are on the front lines, fighting the pandemic, and the appreciation, everything that they do is, words are not enough, but certainly a big thank you to them. And lastly, thank this board. I think we moved on two items that I have gotten a lot of calls of in the Eden area. One with the filling of the expired term of Mr. Kirkman. I have gotten a, been contacted several times and throughout the last couple of weeks about making sure that we had, that we considered moving on that. And then the last thing is the, our resolution in support of opening up North Carolina. I know I was on the phone as late as this afternoon, and the mayor of Eden, he shared with me his support of us moving on that, on that topic. You know, it's, the time has come where we have to, we need to start looking at opening back up North Carolina and our area. It needs to be done with a sense of urgency so that we can safely get back to business as usual, as normal. It's going to be a new normal, but I have confidence in our citizens and the members of our community, whether it be in a church group or the salon, that they have the, will have the foresight to move forward during this pandemic and look after the patrons who come in there, as well as the citizens themselves. I think they have, we, there's enough education out there now with this pandemic. The universal precautions is widely known. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger?
Yes. Well, thank you. And certainly, the resolution does not change the Health Department's recommendations. It's just, at least my personal belief, and I believe this is shared by the commissioners, that the people know how to protect themselves and implement such rules as are necessary for them, as opposed to the government telling them how to act. And the government telling them what they should be doing when it is so inconsistent with what you see lining up outside of stores and what you see in the larger retail establishments. So it is time to move forward as far as opening things up. Also want to also extend the condolences to the Kirkman family. Thank them for the time that Wayne spent on the school board, both the Eden City School Board and the county school board. And thank Ms. McKinney for her willingness to serve out the remainder of that term. And certainly not to be forgotten is this weekend. Although many things may not be as we're used to, it is Memorial Day, and we cannot forget those that gave their life for the very freedoms that we do have. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate all those who came out tonight to voice their concerns with the county. I'd also like to appreciate the chair for having staff read the emails. I appreciate those who wrote the emails to voicing their concerns as well. And your voice was heard tonight. We appreciate that. And again, let's, I'll practice personal responsibility. Your safety is up to you. You know what to do. You know what not to do. Be careful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'd first like to acknowledge our EMS people during the week of 17 through 23, which has designated our National EMS Week. And it's the 46th anniversary of that. And I think all of the commissioners would agree that we have an extraordinary group of individuals serving on our various EMS services. We haven't always had the best equipment or fully staffed as we would like, but particularly, it's been visible during this COVID-19 issue that our EMS people have been on top of their work, have acted professionally. And my hat's off to them, and I would like to recognize them on EMS Appreciation Week for the, and it's a national week. So when you see some of the EMS people, as a private citizen, tell them thank you, and I hope they enjoyed their week of recognition. Folks, it's obvious that the protocols apparently have worked as far as adjusting how we deal with COVID-19. You heard me say last meeting, and I say it again, it's not going away. It's going to be here, and these protocols are the reason. Now, we could have done better, I'm sure, on many of the things, but still, they've been responsible for reducing, reducing the number of cases that we have suffered in this county. And I would ask for our citizens to redouble their effort to follow these guidelines so that we don't have to backtrack on opening the various facilities, and the essence of our resolution tonight. I'll mention to you that we will not be adjourning this meeting tonight. We will be in recess until next Tuesday. And that is a public meeting, and I advise the public of that. However, we will follow the existing schedule that we're using here as far as a number of folks attending. And if the public at large has comment or question, to pass that along electronically or telephonically as appropriate. That said, we'd need to move into a closed session tonight, and I would look for a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318 11A1. Approve session minutes five, instruct negotiating agents, and six, discuss personnel.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. We are now going to move to closed session.